Thank you. We appreciate each of you being with us this evening. If you have a cellphone or a device that might ring and disturb our meeting, please set it to silent so that we can give you our full attention. This is the Fort Mill Town Council Regular Meeting, December the 13th, 2021. We will now stand for a pledge of allegiance, and then Councilman Helms will give our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Fathers, we come before you tonight, we thank you for the many blessings you've instilled upon us, we pray that you'll be with us tonight, guide us, direct us, give us the wisdom that we need to conduct the town's business, we'll give you the praise and glory for all in your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you all for joining us, this is a special night. We had a little celebration prior to the meeting to celebrate the service of our three council members that will be retiring. Trudy, there aren't really perfect words to say thank you because they're not big enough, they're not kind enough. You are a joy to work with, and your commitment to the community is evidenced in everything you think, do, or say. You have been tireless in bringing to us the items that you felt were needing to be addressed, and you did it in a pleasant way. You have done everything that you possibly could have to represent Fort Mill in a meaningful way, and we're all honored to have served with you. So let's give a round of applause for Trudy. We're so blessed to have Trudy in our community. And this isn't goodbye. I expect to see you at all of our events and sitting right there with us, so this is not goodbye.
As long as it's not all the council meetings.
Just every public hearing. That's right. Jamie is on a work assignment right now, he was expecting to be here a little late. He too has been exemplary in bringing to us his wisdom and his incredible ability to research and find things and put them together quickly. Jamie has been a real workhorse, when we needed him, he was there, so it's going to be sad to be without him. And then Mr. Huntley. Oh, what can you say about Mr. Huntley? A turn of phrase, a twinkle, a joke, he was always bringing a smile, no matter what he did, he was here every day, he took his role so seriously and gave it everything he had for this community. So devotion and service were definitely Mr. Huntley's to behold. We've been blessed to have the service of each of the three of these candidates, these council members, and we welcome the new candidates in January, but we want to give a loving embrace to the ones that have been with us and gotten us this far. So thank you so much. I would be remiss to not also pay homage to one of our previous council members, Mr. Grady Irvin. I served with Grady many years, but I think more importantly to me, I used to go and play at his home, his daughter Cheryl and I are the same age. I've known Grady all my life, and when he wasn't here working tirelessly for the community, he might have been out there with that Fort Mill times, or definitely if you couldn't find him, those two places, he was at the golf course. A pillar of our community, a tremendous man, a loving father and grandfather, he will be deeply missed. He passed away a couple of days ago, and quite a shock to us all, but again, we're blessed to have these folks among us and to guide us into the future. So heart and prayers go out to the Irvin family. All right, council members, you have been provided the minutes of the November 8th, 2021 Town Council Meeting. Are there any changes, deletions, or additions?
You're in, I move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion.
I'll second that motion.
And a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. We will move into public comment pursuant to Section 2-46 of the Code of Ordinances for the Town of Fort Mill. Any citizen of the town may appear before council for the purpose of providing public comments on any municipal matter except personnel matters. Those who wish to speak must sign in outside of council chambers prior to the start of the meeting. Citizens will be given three minutes each to speak. Do we have anyone signed in this evening?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All righty then. Then we'll move immediately into presentations. The first presentation is the awards of the Christmas parade winners. Jacana Hester is our events planner, and she will assist in bringing those folks in.
So happy to see you. All right, best car is grip and tire in alignment. Tasha and I have been friends for many years. I knew when you were just a little teen, honey. Wish in mama's heart. So Michael and Kayden, we'd like to present you with the best car award.
Thank you.
Thank you. Isn't that pretty? Isn't that pretty, Sam? Thank you all, we appreciate you. Good to see you. Thank you for participating.
Thanks, guys.
Good to hear.
The participation is just awesome. How are you?
Hi. Oh, my goodness, you look beautiful.
Hi, welcome. This award is for best Christmas theme. Cycle Hopps, Kara Tolson, Travis Tolson, Stephen, and Teresa Dykes. Thank you so much for working with us. We'd love to give you a memento trophy for your participation.
Turn around, the first camera.
There we go. Smile.
Great, thank you all.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Hi there. How beautiful you are. Hi, how are you? Thank you for joining us tonight. So you're going to be receiving a trophy tonight for the best walk-in through Miller Street Dance Academy with Shay Tonlin. And you're Charlie, right? Is today a special day? It's your birthday. My birthday's this week too. Isn't that awesome? These are very special, aren't they? Miss Trudy's birthday's in December, Miss John Day's in December. Really helps, you know? So maybe...
Can we sing "Happy Birthday"? This is Charlie.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Charlie. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, sweetheart. There's some takeout hallway. Did you have candy today already?
They are going to do it now.
I hope you have a wonderful night of church. Can we get Chris to thank your pictures, sweetie?
Thank you.
Well, you too. You too. Thank you. There's some takeout hallway. Did you have candy today already?
They are going to do it now.
I hope you have a wonderful night of church. Can we get Chris to thank your pictures, sweetie?
Thank you.
Well, you too. You too. Thank you, dear Christmas. Hi, come on up. Come on up. Where did I go? Come on here, the pots, we recognize you. The most creative trophy award goes to Hydra Hot Tubbs and Pools, which just sounds awesome. We have Clay Norman, Rachel, and Chandler, so thank you so much for participating, and your creative approach got you a trophy.
Woo-hoo! All right, all right, there we go.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Let me get one of you, Mayor.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Merry Christmas. Thank you.
We have one more. Come on up here. How are you? You too. Hi, how are you? Ladies, oh, that's pretty. All right, the most holiday spirit, which doesn't surprise me at all, not at all, goes to the Hauser Group. Let me tell you, these are fine ladies, a great complement to our community and a dear friend. So Debbie, we'd like to... Debbie, Amanda, and Elise, we'd like to present you with something for your trophy case.
Thank you.
And we'd like to say thanks for participating in all you do.
Thanks for having us, it was a great event. It was so much fun.
It was a lot of fun.
All right, let's get us a moment of time.
Perfect, thank you. Thank you so much.
It's always wonderful when they have fun too, you know? That was great, thank you so much. Thank you, Jacana, for planning and executing a wonderful parade, and all of staff for supporting that event. It was very nice to have it in person again this year. Old business items. Hmm? Oh, the weather was awesome, wasn't it?
The crowd was great.
It's the largest crowd I remember. Oldest, oldest business items, maybe from the oldest mayor. Old business items. Old business item number one, second reading, an ordinance to adopt a revised business license ordinance in accordance with the Business License Standardization Act 2020, Act Number 176. Chris Pettit is our expert. Christopher?
Mayor, there have been no changes since first reading, just as a reminder. This is to bring our business license ordinance into compliance with the new state laws that have come out recently. And if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Any questions, council members? No change since the previous review?
We have a motion to accept old business item number one.
Okay. Lisa, did you have a question?
I was just going to ask, have we had any public comments or anybody approached the town with the changes?
We have not, and our communication will really go out to the businesses, the renewal folks, starting this week upon your approval.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
All right, so we have a motion on the table to approve, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can we have a second? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, thank you so much. New business items. New business item number one, a resolution amending the Town of Fort Mill Personnel Manual so as to update Section 9 entitled "Attendance and Leave to Include a Temporary Policy to the Section Regarding Additional Sick Leave as Related to COVID-19." Debbie Harden is our expert and our HR manager. Thank you, Debbie, for joining us tonight. Can you tell us a little bit about this?
This resolution will help with some retention with some quality people with our new hires. As you know, new hires, when they start, they don't have any time, and so this is basically related to work-related exposures and positive cases. So if we have an exposure and have to send someone home, they don't have any sick time, and so we're requesting them to go home and to quarantine, and so this resolution would allow for some quarantining hours of sick time. We'd rather them be home than be at work, and this also would encourage reporting, reporting these incidents because they don't have time, they may feel like they'd have to be at work, and we want sick folks to feel like they can stay home, so.
Is this consistent with other municipal approaches that you're aware of?
Yeah, I believe so. I'm not sure that they have the, this exact resolution. I think, you know, across the area, people are doing different things. We have to kind of get inventive when it comes to sick leave and annual leave policies along the lines of COVID.
And we're no different than any other business. At this point in history, everybody is looking for good employees, so this is something that I think the town has to stay competitive and has to look towards ways to ensure that we keep the great employees that we do have. So any questions from council on this particular business item?
Debbie, you mentioned this mainly for new hires, but how does it impact current employees?
It will impact anyone that we have to send home or for exposure or that has to stay home because they're positive. If they have already been given an 80-hour of time because of what the government did in 2020, or what you all have done earlier in the year, from January to March 31, you allowed us to extend that 80 hours. If they haven't used any of that time, we can give it to folks that we're sending home as well because of work-relatedness, and so it will affect those as well.
Okay. Any further questions?
So Monae, I was just looking at the exhibit, a, if a new employee, they get 80 hours of sick, sick leave, that's how it works, right?
Up to 80.
Up to 80.
Yeah, if they need to use it.
Okay. And at that point, if they exhaust the 80, then it's just not paid, right?
Either not paid, or if they do, or if they have any accumulated time, they can use it.
Okay.
And they can also use their vacation time accumulated if they want to, it's up to them.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are we allowing any kind of a work from home if they are able to work from home and if, you know, they're not sick, they're just quarantined?
Yeah, for exposures, if they can work from home, we definitely do, you know, allow that. We've gotten creative with that as well. If there's classes that they can take, loner laptops, those kind of things, we are always, you know, trying to help the employee, especially for instances where we're sending them home.
Okay, that's good news, thank you. Further questions?
When do we want to look at this again? I know it may not be part of the resolution to have an end date, but how often will we review those policies?
I would think once every six months. We're, we have seen since this thing started, laws and then increases, and it depends on the time of year, weather, you know, large gathering times, and sure, after Christmas, you know, those kind of things. So maybe once every six months to kind of keep a check on it.
All right, so maybe, Davey, can we put for our June agenda then, an action item to review the status and where we are, and if it needs to be reviewed or extended at that point?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think that's a good idea because we all want it to go away. Oh, boy, do we want it to go away. But it seems like every day, there's a new name for a new variant, so, you know, we do have to continue the work of the community, so I can appreciate the need. So I agree with the, having a six-month review, that's a good idea.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? You're in, I'll call for the motion.
I make a motion to approve new business item number one.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Thank you so much. New business item number two, utility connection requests for property located outside of town limits. Davey Broom is our expert.
Thank you, Mayor. Town, the town was approached by a resident, actually some, a county resident that lives outside of our town limits but is in close proximity to a water main that is owned by the Town of Fort Mill that serves a nearby neighborhood, and they have approached us requesting to tap into that water main for water service only. That's the only available utility in that area for them, as we do not have any sewer connections in their, in their nearby vicinity. So our utilities director, Greg Rushing, has spoke with them on multiple occasions, provided them all of the fees and charges that it would take if they were allowed to tap into our water system. They're aware that, that Town Council are bringing this in front of you tonight and that your decision is final on this matter, but we did ask, we did let them know that we would bring it to you. They've not only agreed to the charges, they've also agreed to sign an annexation, a letter of intent for annexation, should their property become contiguous with other town properties.
So I think it's, it's important to be clear to all those listening, this property is not currently contiguous to the town.
That is correct.
What is the benefit to the town for us to allow this?
Outside of just adding another utility customer to our water system, you know, that's right, at this moment, that is really the only benefit to the town.
I'm not sure how the rest of council feels, but I'm going to go ahead and say, I am a little uncomfortable that it sets a precedent for anyone that wants to tap on to water services or sewer services. We've turned down a couple of developments that we might be put in an awkward position if we were to say no to the development because of a road, and they decide to build in the county but want to tap into our services. I'm uncomfortable with that. Those are just my thoughts, council. What say you?
What rate would this person be paying?
They would be paying the outside rate, which is double the rate of the inside town limit rate.
Existing house or new house?
This is an existing home, if I'm correct. Existing home. And our, Greg, and apologize for Greg, did they make us aware that they were having any issues with water services as far as a well?
Didn't mention it, but I think they're in the process of trying to sell the property, but that's a, that's a guess on my part.
And so, Mayor, we've been, we've been approached in the past from same type of situation where they were having difficulty getting water or digging a well and getting water for the property, they didn't pass any information along to us for this particular property.
But it's an existing home, so the assumption is they already have a source for water.
I would, yes.
Couldn't get a CO without it.
Right.
Even in the county.
It looks like they would pay nearly around $34,000 to tap into it.
I need further discussion or a motion? And I hear neither one.
I was going to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Davey, I guess the reason, if they're looking to sell the property, that's why they're looking to tap into the town?
That would be my guess, it seems so, that they're trying to enhance the property's value with tapping into our water system, which is, what the water quality of our system is, you know, we see on top of it, follow all the South Carolina DEHEC regulations, and it's tested regularly. And again, if you, if water lines break, we're there to make the repairs to them as well.
I also think it's important to note that our ratepayers and our tax dollars create and maintain that service for our community. If this community hasn't been paying city taxes, then I'm not, I can't support this request.
Yeah, my comment is, if, if they would pass on information where they're having trouble not getting water, then that would be one situation, but where they just want to enhance the property to get water, that's another one. So if they could pass, if they are having trouble, if they could just pass that information home, so consider it a little bit better.
I will let, we'll let them know that if you determine you don't intend to.
Well, we have to take a vote.
Yes.
What are the consequences of a no vote tonight?
Well, they would just basically come, go back to the drawing board if it is, if they are having issues with getting quality water for that property, they would restart the process to come back to council and bring it back before you.
And timing for that approximately? Take them a month?
Probably about a month.
So delay it 30 days or so?
Yeah, but again, we haven't had anything presented to us that says they have an issue with their well or something.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. If they did, yeah. If they did come back to us and say it'd be 30 days.
Might be a different situation. Maybe, maybe. All right, I haven't heard a motion. I think I'm allowed to make one? Yes. No? Yes? No? No?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion to, to deny new business item number two. I'll second that motion.
All those in favor of the motion to deny, please say aye.
May I ask a question first?
Yes.
If we deny it, they can still come back and re-request it, that's right. I just want to make sure.
Yep. All those in favor of the motion to deny, please say yea. All right, all those opposed, please say nay, and it is unanimous denial. Information discussion, information discussion, item number one, proposed allocation of American Rescue Plan funding. Davey is our expert. Davey, I think I always read over that and think, what is that? This is about the money that the federal government is providing with a lot of stipulations and strings on how it is to be used.
That is correct, Mayor, and, you know, the American Rescue Plan, again, is limited and restrictive in the funding that you can utilize the money for. Town of Fort Mill was allotted a total amount of $11,93,955. We have received our first allotment of that money in the, in the amount of $5,546,977.40. The second allocation for that will take place around October of 2022. So we don't have all 11 million right now, but we have half of it. So staff has studied the options for the funds based on the language in the American Rescue Plan. Again, funds must be obligated by the end of the year on 2024, and monies must be spent by the end of year 2026. And again, the American Rescue Plan monies are restricted in their use. So there's some opportunities that we can utilize some of this money in a quick manner, and we can address some of our current budgeted items for the 2021, 2022 fiscal year budget. Those include the Archie Street Sewer Lift Station upgrades in the tune of $785,000. They qualify, that is a, any water and sewer infrastructure projects are the, the most clear when it comes to allotment and allowances for the funding for this money, so we, we're confident we can spend that $785,000 through this ARP funding. There's also information technology that helps us improve our various cybersecurity and upgrade that throughout our town to the tune of $300,000 as well. And then we still have, in our budget, we have a, the water meter changeout program, you know, we recently did that in the last couple of years for our residential meters. We still have some meters that are larger than the typical three-quarter inch residential meter, they're one-inch and larger meters. We can fund that changeout of those meters in the amount of just a little over $133,000. So close to, if my math is right, close to $1.2 million maybe that we can allocate this money for immediately. There's also some proposed funding that is, that's not associated with utilities infrastructure. The first one of those being, the plan does allow for the recapturing of lost revenue due to COVID-19 for the Town of Fort Mill. Staff is currently addressing and looking into how much we can recover from that, and that is, the municipal association's recently provided a calculator that you can utilize to calculate these funds, and we've been working on that diligently recently, and it's, it is very challenging when it comes to exactly what is allowed in that. So we anticipate having some numbers for you very soon. We want to verify those numbers through a professional service that can help us make sure that we're on the right track with that. So there's going to be some monies we feel that we'll be able to collect through that lost revenue. Now, once we collect that amount of money, that is actually would, could be used and open up some more avenues. to exactly what is allowed in that. So we anticipate having some numbers for you very soon. We want to verify those numbers through a, a, a professional service that can help us make sure that we're on the right track with that. So there's going to be some monies we feel that we'll be able to collect through that lost revenue. Now, once we collect that amount of money, that is actually would, could be used and open up some more avenues for some additional types of funding with that. The overall plan, since we have $11 million to work with and have to plan for, we discussed previously in other, in other meetings, that it would be a good idea to hire on a professional contract labor to administer this, this pro, this program. We, we anticipate spending about $200,000 to have someone administer the projects as well as the reports that go along with that, the, the American Rescue Plan, the projects we have assigned for. We understand that it does allow for heating, ventilation, and air conditioning replacements as well as the overall system upgrade. We have several facilities in town that we can, we're working through to determine what air conditioning systems need to be changed out. And that's the entire system, from the unit itself to the duct work, to the, you know, all of the, the parts associated along with that to help, help, help with the ventilation so that it lowers its COVID-19 chances in each facility.
And looking into the iron filtration system?
We're looking into all of it. We, just because of the unknown at this time of the exact number of units that we're going to need, we're really putting a million dollars toward that. It could be right up to a million dollars, it could be just shy of that, or maybe even a little more based on our needs. And then there's also an opportunity, if council chooses, there's an opportunity to offer essential personnel bonuses. So that's another amount. And if, if that's something that council would like to bring, bring forth at some time, you would bring us your amount, we would plug that into this, this plan as well. The, the easier, or I guess the more, the areas that, again, that are less restrictive and a little more open for interpretation is the utilities infrastructure. I've tasked our utilities director, Greg Rushing, with providing us water projects, water distribution projects, as well as sewer collection projects. All of the projects together, probably, they total up to about $10 million. So we could feasibly spend every dime of this money on utility projects. Now, that's, that's not to say that we should do that right off, but there's some opportunities coming up, and we feel like that are coming up in the near future, that could help us multiply our money or make our investments grow based on, you have the Rural Infrastructure Authority grants of $500,000. We've recently submitted a grant request to them and was denied. That's the first one that has been denied in about two or three cycles. We've been very fortunate to get, get those $500,000 grants from the Rural Infrastructure Authority. But we got some good feedback from them. We were told the reason we weren't selected this time is the pool had grown from previous years. And you can imagine why, you know, municipalities are getting monies and they want to maximize their funding as, as we do. So the pool has grown. Good news is, we still have an opportunity. There's, there's two cycles per year. So every six months, you can put in for one of these grants. So we have, we're gonna submit for the same grant in April. And it would address the Archie Streets Lift Station, the upgrades for it. And that's what I'd brought up earlier, $785,000. Good thing with that, if we're selected for that grant, we can use the ARP monies for the difference of the $500,000. So $285,000 would essentially come out of ARP funding for that. For the, if you, when you, when you're looking at water distribution projects, we have areas in town that have aged water systems. And you can probably think about where those are around town, as our older neighborhoods. We have the ability to, you know, or opportunity to upgrade some of those water systems that, you know, over time, that, you know, the, the lines may have gotten a little smaller based on some, you know, corrosion over the years with the style of pipe. But those are some projects that we can go back to the drawing board and prioritize, once we determine the pool of money we have to work with and the grants that are available for us to, to submit for. Sewer is, you know, when you look at sewer, you've got lift stations that we have been working on in recent years. We have a few more that are fairly large that need to be upgraded based on capacity. So we feel like there's some opportunities to overall, make our overall system, sewer system, much better than it is currently with some of these funds. One thing that has recently come, come up, there's no definite plan at this moment, but we feel like they're working on it. If you remember, back in October, Governor McMaster announced that the state of South Carolina may, he's trying to put together a grant fund for about $500 million, just to go along with ARP funding. He's, he's just a push to spend the monies on water and sewer infrastructure. The municipal association recently provided some guidance on this possible grant opportunity. And, and, you know, based on that guidance, it was a more of a, you know, let's wait and see what the State House comes up with. Because you, you can spend the money now, immediately, and, and spend it on your projects and be done with it. But based on that $500 million, possible $500 million grant, that's where I was speaking earlier, we may be able to increase our funding capabilities. You know, if it's a, if it's a, you pay upfront and they'll, they'll match a, match it in the program, then we could turn $5 million into a $10 million project. So we, we are currently monitoring that. There hasn't been any updates recently when it comes from the State House on that. But we do, do understand between the State House and the governor, there's still some talk about how those funds will be allocated. So, again, we're looking at that and we will continue to monitor that. But the overall plan at this time is to address the items that we know that we can qualify for, start utilizing that money, and then take the approach to see how the state starts with this grant opportunity, if they do move forward with that. If they don't, I anticipate them making a decision fairly quickly, because I'm sure they're getting the same questions around the state that we have for them on that funding. So.
Is that through ORS, Office of Regulatory Staff, that would manage it? Or do, do we know yet?
Do not know yet.
Okay.
Again, it's, the, the governor put it out in the public that he wants to set aside $500 million for grant purposes for ARP funding, for water and sewer infrastructure. Now, whether that comes about or not, we won't know until, until a decision's made. But again, I, I do think that's something that's gonna be talked about quite heavily very soon. And some type of answer should come about in the next quarter or two, I would imagine.
Thank you. Ms. Pierce, there's no lack of places to spend it?
That is correct. I mean, it's, some are much easier avenues than others.
Well, I've also learned that it's best to make use of what we have and not be surprised if we don't get the sack apart. So council, do you have questions or comments?
So first of the five and a half million that's here, how much of this do you have allocated through the proposal that's in front of us? Because I don't see a total.
It looks like it's about, the, the, it's the first portion, about 1.2 million.
Currently budgeted.
That's currently budgeted.
Okay.
That we can address. Now, again, it may be worth waiting till the April timeframe to see if we get a $500,000 grant through RIA. That could give us even more money in the overall ARP plan. You know, I, I think that would be wise on our part if we did, at least see if we gain that grant. If not, go ahead and the whole $785,000 be funded through ARP.
Okay, so what you're saying, if I understand correctly, you're on that piece not to go ahead and move forward, but wait until April? Or you're not going to replace it today? So my guess is replacing it, what's our timeframe for replacing the sewer? If we said go for it today, what's the timing?
If we said go, move forward today, then we would, it would go through the same procurement process of any others. It'd probably be about 30, 30 to 45 days to get a RFP drawn up, advertised, and a public bid opening would take place on it.
Okay, so.
So you may look, you may be looking at a two, two and a half month, maybe even three month timeframe, turn around to actually vehicles and equipment showing up on site to do the changeout.
Okay, so then you basically would know within a month if you'd have a grant to offset some of that $700,000?
I thought you said April.
Yeah, so, but I mean, once you started the process, again, you know, we've already talked about this sewer, the lift station anyway, you know, so you moving forward with it is going to happen whether we have a grant or not, correct?
Right, but I may be wrong on this, but I don't, I don't think you can put in for a grant for a project that's already underway. I think you have to get the funding first upfront.
Okay, that's part of what I'm trying to pull out to understand, the timing on all of this. Okay.
Right.
So you're coming back now and saying that basically take the Archie Street off of here maybe until the April timeframe?
Yeah, I would leave it on here. That we know that we can fund these, the ones that I've brought forth. And at the very least, come April, if we don't get the grant, go ahead and spend the money through ARP. So that's where the, I wouldn't take, remove it from this list. It's just, we'll address the ones that are on here that we can go ahead and pay for. And just, when April gets here, if we don't get the grant, then we'll just move forward with it.
Can we go ahead and move forward with having the RFQ, RFP ready to go come April?
Yeah, we can do that.
So that you're not wasting another 30 or 45 days for it?
And I believe Greg had to leave, but that's something that you have to, I believe you have to submit with the grant proposal.
Okay.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Which I believe we may already have, since we just put in for the recent grant for that particular project.
You've been using a lot of that grant money to replace some of these old stations, right?
We have. We've been very fortunate. We've, we replaced two in 2020, in a sum of 2021. So they were, one of them was, again, capacity related.
Right.
And the other one's very outdated. It was our oldest lift station on our system. So we were able to put a system that's probably been there since the 40s, 50s.
Where was that, Davey?
And put in a brand new system.
Where was that?
That was, it was called Charlotte Highway.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Now, the water meter replacement, that 133, I think it says, we don't have a print out, so I'm struggling to see that far. That, will that complete us on the water meter replacement? Will be done after that?
That should complete us for that. And.
And that's not residential?
That's not.
That's the ones that we did not.
Right.
Put in the million dollar replacement.
Right.
And so how long will we be good with water meters then?
Well, the water meters, to, you know, will, they typically, when they sell them, they'll say 10 to 15 years. Typically 15 or so years is what you're going to get. They call them the cash registers in the ground, though. So the older, the longer you keep them in service.
So where do they get?
Yeah, the less they collect and are captured. And so you lose a little bit of funding.
We did. Okay.
Yeah.
Will we go ahead and put on a long-term planning for us to start looking at replacement in 10 years?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Or replace them as they were.
Well, we would do that anyway. But I think to your point, yeah, it should be part of the 10-year plan, or when technology improves to the point that we see something that's even better.
Right.
Correct. So the additional almost $4 million, the lever for, when would we expect to have a proposal from staff regarding how that would be spent and the timing for that?
Again, we would like to, you know, you know, have some additional discussions with council about some of these funding opportunities that you may be interested in. And we can also provide you the monies that we can actually recapture due to lost revenue as well. So we can, we can, I can send that to you in a, you know, an email form, letting you know, giving you an update on the, on the project on a monthly basis, if that would, if that would help.
It would appear that one of the first steps might be, if we are indeed going to hire someone, that that be one of the first steps, because they would manage all the other successive choices that we make. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, Mayor.
Is there a pool of people to choose from that are astute in this line of work?
At this time, after, from what we've read, it will probably behoove us to bring in some type of attorney or legal group that could help us with this.
So would that be an employee or just contract lawyer?
Just contract.
Okay.
Isn't that great? They give us money that requires us to spend money to pay someone to come from the outside to make sure we are able to do this, to spend that money. Okay. Yeah. So it appears that from a council perspective, we will need to determine essential personnel bonuses, how we want to go about that. I think it would be good for council to receive any information you may have on what other municipalities are doing so that we can stay in keeping. The other thing is, I would like to look at breaking that and perhaps not do it all at one time. I don't want to do bonuses and then have people job shop and hop away. I'd like for those bonuses to be for the people that have withstood the test of this pandemic and are continuing to fight day by day. So that would be great.
Just a, no, 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 you know, not just municipalities. I'd love to see what other government entities that are getting these, how they are using that. So school districts, you know, and not just Fort Mill School Districts, maybe some others.
Okay.
And how creative they are with the bonuses.
That would be good. Just to give us some parameters to work in, so that we can do it properly. We want to do what's right for our employees, but we need to do what's right for the long term as well.
Mayor, not to interrupt you, but I think it was a good idea, if you're looking at breaking that into multiple bonuses, it, it, it does allow for one bonus per year up to a certain amount. But it, it, you could break that into, into multiple opportunities.
They deserve what we can give them, but I think we need to do it in a way that we can be assured that we have it to give. The heating and ventilation one, I think that's a no-brainer. We just need to move on, on that one. And to me, one of the bigger items is the information technology that we already have budgeted. In today's world, that's almost at a crisis to make sure we have everything in place to protect our data. I wonder if $300,000 is enough?
It is. That was, and, and Mayor, back when we were going through the, the budget process, that was, you know, that was one of those items that was put into the budget. Originally didn't make it into the budget, but then we placed it into the budget later in the process, based on the, we, staff study, studying into the matter of ARP and found that what we were looking to upgrade with qualifies, and we feel like qualifies for this funding. So we placed it in the budget in anticipation of actually spending it out of the ARP. So, yeah, that's something, again, that we can, we can take care of immediately.
The HVAC piece of it, that the mayor mentioned, is a million enough for the buildings that we think? I mean, I know we've talked about this specific building, we've talked about town hall, you know.
Our community center?
Community centers, yeah. So many different places that we know. I have to imagine we've already got some estimates on repairs or replacement, knowing that it, yeah, that we've patchworked so much. I have to think we've been weighing that out anyway. So a million feels comfortable to take care of all of that?
At this time, now, this is just a projection and a proposal for this amount of money. It could always, as long, as long as we have funding left in ARP that we haven't earmarked for a certain project, or even if we have earmarked it and you would rather take the money and spend it for air conditioning units, heating and air, then we can always fund it for that. It's, this million dollars is just, is flexible right now.
Okay.
Until we get into the process and determine what we want, that, that number could go up possibly.
For the recapturing of lost revenue, does that include employees' lost hours? Can we? Can we capture any of that? So Debbie was just talking to us about people who have been quarantined and not able to work, not necessarily due to them having COVID, but their job affecting that they had to be quarantined. Are we gonna be able to recoup some of those hours or the wages for those hours?
I, I do not know the answer to that specifically, but I can find out for you.
Okay, cause I have to think we're tracking it, I mean, cause each employee is being kept record on that, okay.
Any further questions?
So what is the ask at this time for us to give you approval to move forward at the beginning? You know, the first 1.2 or 1.2 with more information to come on the second half of it? Or what are you asking for?
At this time, it's more of information discussion. We'll have to come back to you as for a, a budget amendment.
Yeah, because the 1.2 is already budgeted, so it's out there. Yeah, so we don't need to vote on that.
Right.
And then again, we need to move forward with hiring someone that's gonna be able to lay all this out and make sure what we vote on, we can do. Is that correct?
That is correct. And in that, in that budget amendment as well, there's gonna be a little more detail into what we would spend upfront.
What is the timeframe for finding someone to hire?
I would anticipate it may be a couple of weeks, it may be a couple of months, just depending on the workforce. I, I don't have a good, a good clear answer on that. But we can go ahead and start with tracking that down, see if we can get some, someone for it.
I'd say sooner rather than later because everybody else is gonna be looking for the same thing.
Absolutely.
Do we know if there's, you know, the other municipalities or government entities near us? Or if there is a firm that they're using that we may or may not want to leverage or lean on?
We can reach out to them and see if they, if they have, what their plan is for that.
Okay, just curious, again, as we're all comparing and learning together.
Right.
Further questions?
When do you anticipate coming back to us next phase?
Budget amendment, Chantay, would you say January?
No, sir. It really depends on how all these other things play out before we can actually come with a budget without having to come multiple times.
So if we can get the, an idea of what bonuses might look like, we can work on the other portions and have that ready.
I know it's holiday time, but if you can get us something in the next week, we'll work to get back to you because I would not like to roll into the end of the first quarter and we are still at the same place.
Okay.
Okay?
We can do that.
Thank you. All right, executive session, please. Note, council may take action on executive session items listed on the agenda when they come back into public session. Executive session item number one, discussion on personnel contractual matter regarding the town attorney. Item number two, discussion incident to personnel matters pertaining, pertaining to part-time municipal judge. And item number three, discussion incident to personnel matters pertaining to town manager annual review. I will need a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion, we go into executive session.
I got a motion and a second. All those, and, all those in agreement, say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nay. We will return. Let the record reflect that no vote was taken in executive session. I need a motion to return to regular session.
Make a motion to return to regular session.
I need a second. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nay. Thank you. We did have a couple of items that I believe we need to make motions to.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we allow management staff to proceed with the personnel contractual matter regarding our town attorney as directed during the executive session.
Okay, you got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nay. Thank you. And I think we have another motion that needs to be made.
Yes, ma'am. I make a motion for Davy to proceed to hire the part-time judge for just one year.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nay. Thank you so much. All right. Lisa, for the good of the whole.
Thank you, Trudy, Jamie, Larry, everybody for their service. For our incoming council members, get ready. We're gonna have some fun, but we're gonna get a lot of work done. Year in review, we've done a lot this year. Never would have thought we'd be dealing with a second year of COVID, but I'm afraid it's a word that won't go away. And we've lost a lot of great people this year. And it makes us value every moment that we're with our loved ones, with our family, with our friends and with the town. Just recently, actually it was after the tree lighting, we were at Hobos, Brian and I went for dinner there afterwards. And we're sitting there talking to people and it was funny because, you know, Chris Wolf ended up coming in, you know, two or three people I went to high school with coming in and talking. And I looked at Brian afterwards and I was like, you know, as much as we've considered leaving the town, I can't imagine going into a restaurant and not having the lifelong relationships that I have with people here. You might meet a new neighbor, somebody you knew, but I can't imagine being without the lifelong relationships and telling the stories on Trudy's son growing up or, you know, as Ben's coming on board, the stories of Ben and I growing up. Yeah, all those type things, but we're very blessed with our town and that despite all the growth that we've had and all the changes we've had, we're still a small town community. And if you make it that, if you put an effort into it, it'll always be that. And that's, you know, as we've gone through, you know, some of the executive session items, that's one of the things that we discussed in there a little bit is the staff that we have works really good. Police, fire, everybody, add that small town community feel to it. So thank you all for living in this town and participating in this town, cleaning up this town, all the work that we've done, participating in our farmer's market. We've had a great year and I'm looking forward to 2022, scary year.
Even number.
Except for my kids shopping, but that's a whole nother.
Ronnie?
She took it all.
She took it all.
I understand.
Chris?
You never agree with me, do you?
So I remember the first meeting I came to was the meeting to discuss impact fees to see if I wanted to, see if I wanna get involved with this, this crew.
And you came anyway.
And it came back.
There was a long line of people all here and they were all speaking. And I got home and about three hours later, still wasn't a vote. And I said, how, what'd you think? I was like, I don't know, you know? But I remember, I think about if I never would have ran, I'll get emotional saying this, all the cool new people I never would have met outside, cause outside, I'm not from here. I'm, he's informed me already, I'm the only non-native up here, will be come January. But I think about all the people I never would have known, like Larry Huntley. After, I remember that first meeting, I had a, an email from him. Hey, why don't you, before you get sworn in, come eat, let's go get something to eat, you know? And Jamie, you know, we'd go to lunch together. And Trudy, I remember during a heated event one night we had here, and she looked over at me and I was writing on my agenda, Chris, keep your mouth shut, over and over. And I flipped it over and she was looking, she's, what are you writing so much for? And I slid it over to her and I slid it over to her, she looked at me, just shook her head. But I'm, I'm really gonna miss you. And she'd always slit me mitts like this, I don't know if it's cause my breath stinks. Or she was just trying to be nice, I think, cause my breath stinks, so.
She never gives me mitts.
Yeah, so, but, um. I'm gonna miss serving with you and sitting here with you and, and with Larry and Jamie, I'm gonna miss them too, you know? Just the camaraderie that we've all had. Been like brothers and sisters, we'll, we'll fight, but then we'll get along. And at the end of the day, it's, we have what the best interest of our town is, is what we want it to be, right? And so that's all I have.
Yeah, I'm gonna miss my municipal association partners.
Oh, I bet you are. Trudy?
I'm not really sure what I wanna say, but I have enjoyed my six-plus years here. I was thinking a couple of weeks ago about all the time that I've spent over, I'm not gonna say how old I are, how old I am, and you'd be quite glad, I mean, Ronnie.
Since we went together.
Yep, and, but I just love Fort Mill. And that's one of the reasons that I chose to run for town council. Those of you that know Chip, he was not in favor of me running for town council. And I will not tell the world exactly what he said, but I will tell some of you individually if you really wanna know. But I love Fort Mill, again, I'll say that. And I have, I feel like I have served Fort Mill. I served on the school board as well. And I do hope that my term here has made some difference. I know that I have made some long-life friends here. And I just hope that I have made a difference here.
I can confirm that you have.
Thank you.
I can also feel hopeful that before you became a councilwoman, you would show up at our meetings. I feel like you still will. You still have the same phone number and you are welcome at every event we hold and will be recognized lovingly. You have made a difference. And I think this year and last year in particular, we have lost so many of the forefathers and mothers. If we think about Ms. Close and Charlie Boyett and it's just, I can't begin to tell you what that does to my heart. Because those were the folks that gave and sacrificed of their time to make our town what it is. And it is what encouraged me to do everything I could to participate and uphold that. And you have too, you all have. I do think it's important for us to continue. There've been many times in the last several years that we've had folks that are interested in how, how could we do it differently? Or how could we do it a way they're familiar with? And I will contest openly, if you came here, you came here because you thought Fort Mill was unique and special. And you need to love that the way we love that because we know the people that made it that way. And we give of our hearts and our time and our efforts to try to maintain that. It's not that we're not interested in new ideas or new thoughts, but it is that we cling to something that's so good and pure, that's so good, that we want to keep it that way. I miss everyone that has passed and I can't imagine what their family celebrations, the holidays will be like. It hurts, it hurts. But I am grateful that they're part of our leadership and what put us all here behind this desk to try to make the best decisions that we can. Our council will be different and I look forward to the new folks coming on, the energy, the interest. I'm grateful for their commitment to do this. Trudy, I'm grateful for your job.
I am.
And Larry and Jamie and Grady and LA and Charlie and Charlie. And, I mean, the list goes on. This is, I'm moving into my 18th year and I've really had an opportunity to work with some great people. So thank you all. I hope you have wonderful holidays. Thank you, Brian, for everything you do for our community every single day and all your people and the fire department and staff. I know you sit there and we don't, we don't single you out very often, but we're really, really grateful for you. You keep things together and we're, we couldn't do it without you. So thank you so much. With that, I'll entertain.
I don't know how Trudy is, but I'm 73.
Trudy has to make the last motion.
Throw that ethics out the window.
She has to make her last motion.
Would you like to make the last motion for adjournment?
I will.
All right, say it, girl.
Do it.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, all those opposed, nay. Thank you so much.